All right, Commissioners Liel and Godwin. I've heard from Chair Niblin. He's in the waiting room, waiting for the meeting to start. I've not heard from any other Commissioners, but often we'll add one or two that haven't signed on yet. Are you okay with proceeding to the live session?
I think so, yeah. It looks like Lauren just joined, so we should.
Yeah, as I was underway, she jumped on, so we'll have a forum once we.
Were we expecting anybody else? Should we hold off a second, or what's your thought?
Yes, good evening, Chair Niblin. We are expecting Commissioner Hauser. She's emailing me separately. She's having some technical difficulties, so if we wait just a moment, hopefully we can add her and then get underway.
Okay, I'll stand by until you tell me otherwise.
Thank you.
Welcome, everybody, to this evening's Planning Commission Meeting of October 18th, 2021. And before we get into the substance of the agenda, I wanted to say a few things predicate to that about the way we'll be conducting this evening's meeting. In particular, I want to note, the meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Government Code, Section 54953, as amended by Assembly Bill 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The Governor of California has proclaimed a state of emergency related to COVID-19. That was on March 4th of 2020. This teleconference meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct essential business, and it is permitted under the Government Code, Section 54953, in order to protect public health and safety of attendees. And further, I want to note that the meeting will be conducted pursuant, again, to those provisions, and that the Commissioners, the Assistant City Attorney, and City Staff, essential to this meeting, will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location that's open to the public. The public can, however, observe the meeting while sheltering at home via Zoom link as the primary means of participation, or via the cable, channel 26, or livestream broadcasts, as alternate methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live, and will enable the public to speak during public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting in place of email public comments. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raise hand function in Zoom application on a computer, smartphone, or tablet, or else enter *9 to raise your hand if you're dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so City Staff will properly identify you when you return to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number, as shown in the Zoom interface. And with those things said, then we'll move then to the agenda proper, and I guess we'll start with a roll call.
Chair, Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Domarat.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Commissioner Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Liel.
Present.
Commissioner Niblin.
Present.
So then we'll move to the slum to the flag, and I'd ask Commissioner Hauser to lead us in the slum to the flag this evening.
For, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, property and justice.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. We'll move into administrative business, and we'll start with approval of the Order of Agenda. There are motion to approve the Order of Agenda.
Chair, could we take public comment on the administrative business items before we proceed?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Why don't we go ahead then and see if we have any public comments on the administrative business that is on the agenda this evening? Mr. Murdock, do we see any public comment on any of these items?
No, not at this time, Chair. No hands are raised.
Thank you. We'll go ahead then and bring it back to the to the Commission. I see there's no public comments, and I'll ask if there is a motion to approve the Order of Agenda. Commissioner Liel.
Make a motion to approve the Order of tonight's Agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Liel. He's moved to approve the Order of Agenda. Is there a second? Commissioner Godwin.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote to approve the Order of Agenda, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarat.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Liel.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. We'll then move to approval of minutes, and we've got minutes for our meeting of October 4th, 2021, for our consideration this evening. Is there a discussion or a motion pertaining to the minutes of October 4th? Seeing no discussion, I note that a motion would be in order if anybody's inclined to. Commissioner Berman.
I move that we approve the minutes from the October 4th, 2021 meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman's moved to approve the minutes. Mr. Godwin.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve our minutes for the meeting of October 4th, 2021. We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarat.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Liel.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. And I'll confirm that we don't need to designate a liaison for a City Council meeting this evening.
Correct, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move into, excuse me, oral communications, and this is the portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes, and I'll ask Mr. Murdock to let us know if we have any speakers under oral communications.
There are no hands raised, Chair.
Thank you. We'll go ahead then and move along, and I'll confirm that we have no consent items.
Correct.
Thank you. So then we'll move to consideration items, and our first item is one that doesn't have a particular numbers attached to, but is an important matter, and this is Planning Commission input on return to in-person meetings. And we have a brief staff report that is, of course, in the agenda, but I'll ask Mr. Murdock to, and City Attorney, whomever else would be speaking to, to go ahead and give us.
Thank you, Chair Niblin. Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. I am Deputy Planning Director Christian Murdock. The City Council determined on September 27th that the City Council and Commissions and Committees would continue to meet via Zoom through the end of 2021. The Council identified continuing health and safety concerns regarding the Delta variant of COVID-19 and operational challenges related to mask-wearing, vaccination status verification, and testing as reasons to support its decision. The City Council adopted its first resolution required by Assembly Bill AB 361 to authorize continued meeting via Zoom on October 11th. The purpose of this agenda item is to ensure all Commissioners are aware of the Council's actions related to continued online meetings, and also to gather any input the Commissioners may wish to provide in regards to a return to in-person meetings in January of 2022. The staff report contains some key points that may help to start the conversation, including consideration of the ability to wear masks during long meetings, the ability for more people to attend virtual meetings, and the availability of a phone-in option within the Council chambers, only for those meetings that are broadcast live by Pacific Coast TV, which currently include only the City Council and Planning Commission. That concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Go ahead then, and I guess we'd start with any questions anybody may have for Mr. Murdock. You know, of course, want to take public comment on this as well if there is any public comment, but let's start with any questions or clarifications any Commissioners may have from Mr. Murdock, or from the City. And Miss Sharma, who's present this evening. Commissioner Ferguson.
Yeah, as one of the Commissioners who's actually never been to a Commission meeting in person in my whole tenure here, is there a mechanism that they're looking for something to go below a certain case number, or a certain vaccination rate, or some mechanism that we can measure by going back in person? I don't mind doing this via Zoom, but it would be nice to, one day, get to do it the right way.
Yes, Commissioner Ferguson, those are certainly valid points, and we'd love to return to in-person meetings as we have had for many years previously, as soon as we can. The City Council thus far has not identified a specific set of metrics as it relates to wearing of masks. Recently, the Public Health Officers of several Bay Area counties collectively agreed upon a set of criteria to remove the requirement for wearing masks indoors. That's, I imagine, something the Council will want to monitor closely, given that part of their concern is with wearing masks during long extended public meetings, maintained by participants in the meetings who may be master on masks, depending on the circumstances. So thus far, the Council hasn't identified any metrics. Ms. Sharma can outline what the law requires in terms of findings to allow the continued online meetings. There, generally speaking, needs to be some imminent threat to public health and safety, or an order or recommendation from an appropriate public health authority requiring or recommending the wearing of masks, but Ms. Sharma can elaborate.
Yes, as Christian was correct. The findings for this, for continued teleconference meetings require proclamation of the state of emergency and findings that it wouldn't be safe to continue to meet in person, but there are no specific requirements regarding masking or case counts, and that would be a decision that the City Council would need to consider.
Is this something they're kind of renewing at each meeting, or we're just slowly pushing it along? I mean, I wear masks eight to 12 hours a day at work. Don't have a problem with it there, so I don't mind wearing a mask for the meeting, but just wondering why we're still doing it via Zoom, you know, two years later?
Well, I would offer that the City Council has determined that it's not safe for the public to gather for these meetings, and so I think part of this discussion is considerations relevant for potential attendees, and part of the conversation is whatever input or considerations for you as Commissioners, who will need to be there to preside over the meeting. And so we would value input on either point. Certainly, Commissioner Ferguson, I'll note that you've individually found it, you know, not to be difficult to wear a mask for extended periods. Perhaps the other Commissioners can say as well.
Commissioner Berman. Thank you. Um, when it comes to wearing a mask for a long period of time, I mean, I'm sure, me personally, I'm certainly capable of doing it, but it will be uncomfortable, especially for the Chair, given that, on occasion, I serve as Chair when you're speaking a lot. It, I'd imagine it would be uncomfortable, but regardless, I'm inclined to kind of follow City Council's lead on their decision, and I'll support kind of their reasonings, which makes sense to me. I guess, one kind of thinking through the safety and the mask requirement. If masks are required for indoor activities, then there must be, I logically think that there is a safety issue if one were to not wear a mask. So I kind of have this question, is there going to be someone from, I don't know, the Police Department that would regulate to make sure that the community members that participate are wearing masks properly?
Those are great points, Vice Chair Berman. I think there's been no discussion, to my knowledge, about posting a police officer to enforce health precautions at this point in time. I think the complexity of ensuring everyone wears masks and follows all the guidelines in addition to checking vaccine status and/or requiring testing were among the considerations the Council weighed in favor of continuing teleconference meetings for the time being until the rate of transmission and what have you, and perhaps the rate of vaccinations in the community went opposite one another in a sufficient degree to increase.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Commissioner Berman, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I think I have a delay on my end. I thought Mr. Murdock was still talking, but I'm pretty sure I have a delay on my end. Thanks.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, I don't have a problem wearing a mask either, and I feel pretty comfortable having multiple vaccinations that it wouldn't make me sick. I would be concerned for some members of the public who were elderly or immunocompromised, that attending a meeting in person would be more risky for them. And yeah, there is the enforcement issue that are people going to have to show cards, or is there going to be somewhere for someone there from the city for noncompliance? That's kind of all I had to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Commissioner Hauser.
Um, thank you. I would concur with the points that Commissioner Berman made, and say that I agree with the Council's thinking. You know, I think it's a really good point also that Commissioner Godwin made, that, you know, not everyone is vaccinated, and it creates kind of a difficult situation for the public. So I would agree with what the Council is thinking.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Ferguson, I saw your hand was up. I was wondering if you had a follow-up comments or questions?
I did. I was curious if anybody did a metric on if there'd been any effect on public involvement moving the Commission from in-person to remote.
Thank you. I'll kick that over to Mr. Murdock.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not aware of any specific metrics that have been produced. I would say the Council, I think, in my opinion, expressed their observations that attendance has increased, and that a wider swath of the community has been participating in City Council meetings since they've shifted to teleconference during the pandemic. And so I think that was certainly one of the points they wanted to make for discussion purposes for the Planning Commission this evening, to see if the Commission agreed with respect to its meetings. And then also, I just want to take the opportunity to address several Commissioners who have expressed a concern about immunocompromised, or elderly, or other individuals being obligated, if you will, to come to an in-person meeting. For the Planning Commission anyways, there would be a continued dial-in option. So individuals that felt uncomfortable or were otherwise unable to come to the meetings would actually have an expanded means of participating compared to prior in-person meetings before the pandemic. And so it wouldn't be necessarily an either-or option, but I think it may be relevant for the Commission to consider whether that split type of participation is advantageous or disadvantageous to certain persons in one group or the other, or, you know, persons who may not be as capable to continue, you know, phoning in as a method of pers.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Commissioner Liel.
Thank you. I was going to mention just a comment. Anecdotally, I feel like public participation has been increased. I think having the teleconference option has definitely increased involvement in terms of, like, parents with small kids who can't attend meetings in person, and where it's challenging, and back, I guess, when we used to commute to work, even after work, getting to these meetings during the week has been a challenge. So I think anecdotally, and it sounds like the Council had the same thought, is it's only increased access. That being said, we've had technology mishaps and folks not being able to provide their comments live due to, due to such, and I think having that hybrid approach would potentially solve that. From the staff report, it looks like the hybrid approach is being discussed from a public participation standpoint, but I was curious as to a hybrid approach from a committee participation standpoint, if those who are comfortable were able to go to the Council chambers to attend in person. However, committee members who were unable to attend in person, perhaps attendance from that perspective, a hybrid approach from our perspective as well. I don't know if that's been discussed, but just something that perhaps to take into consideration for future discussions.
Thank you, Commissioner Liel. I know we can kick that over to the City Attorney and probably to Mr. Murdock to think some about. I know, you know, in my work at County Council, we've been looking closely whether or not that's a viable approach or not, and I have to say the jury's still out, you know, from our perspective, and anyway, that's, I guess, what I'll say about. Commissioner Domarat.
There we go. Okay, my fingers are not working today. Anyway, I just want to throw in my two cents. I concur with what all the other Commissioners were saying, and also the kind of the decision direction that the City Council is going. As the husband of a working ICU nurse who literally had hundreds of people die in her arms this year, she is, had pounded in my brain, "Wear a mask, always wear a mask." I mean, and these nurses and doctors, they're wearing a lot more gear. We can wear masks for an hour and a half or two hours. That's not an issue. So the other point that she always makes also is that nothing is 100%. We learned that this morning by the death of a great American statesman who was immunized, and I believe his wife was immunized too, and also caught it. So there's still challenges out there, and we all know nothing's 100%. So we just need a fair system that everybody can kind of be guided by, and if there is an opportunity for people to call in, I think that's a great opportunity. If they do not wish to abide by, that'll be set up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Domarat. I appreciate that input. And I guess I would add that my inclination, you know, is sort of along the lines of the shared wisdom that others have already sort of articulated. I am of the view that we probably ought to track what the SC Council is doing, and my own perspective, you know, having attended a lot of meetings historically, is that we'd have to do something different about configuration of our seating. I don't know how much space we need among ourselves, but there are seven of us, as opposed to maybe other panels. So that presents its own kind of unique sort of configuration concerns. And I do think it's going to be very challenging to deny folks entrance to meetings on the basis of vaccination or COVID testing, things like that. So I'm very, and frankly, you know, along the lines others have articulated. I'm, you know, in my perfect world, I prefer not to have, you know, contact with folks who are unvaccinated, candidly. Just state that. If it's at all possible, I know that in a reasonable world, that's not always perfectly doable, but that's just my own sense. And so I do tend to be in favor of continuing to promote meetings. And the other thing is, I do, I do find that it's a little harder to read a room sometimes when we're not able to see folks, all of folks' faces. There are some things that are lost communication-wise, frankly, that are that I know we just had to get used to, but there are some challenges there as well. I do want to make sure that we see if there isn't any public. Commissioner Domarat, your hand's still up. I was wondering if you had any additional run input. Okay, thank you. I do want to see if we have any public comments. So, Mr. Murdock, I'm going to ask if you could ask to whether or not we have any members of the public who want to speak to this matter inside of.
Thank you, Chair. I'm seeing no hands raised for this item.
Thank you. We'll go ahead then and move past that, and then I'll ask if there are any, you know, concluding comments or reflections from folks before we move along. This isn't an item that requires a vote. This was simply taking input. So I will hold for a second. Okay, well, I'm Mr. Murdock. Ms. Sharma, do you have what you need at this point?
I do, Chair. I'm grateful for the Commission's input. Thank you.
Well, then, go ahead and move to new public hearings, and our new public hearing, one of our two new public hearings this evening is file number 2021015, Use Permit UP 12821, and Parking Exception PE 191-21, to establish a feline-only veterinary clinic in an existing commercial space at 150 Eureka Square Shopping Center. And that's APN 016220140. The recommended sequoia action is a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 of the Sequoia Guidelines, and staff's recommended action is that we approve this condition. I'll go ahead and this time ask for a staff report on this matter.
Thank you, Chair. Contract Planner Jacob Garcia will deliver the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Jacob Garcia, Contract Planner. The project before you this evening is for a use permit and parking exception to establish a feline-only veterinary clinic in an existing commercial space in the Eureka Square Shopping Center at 150 Eureka Square. The proposed site is located in the East Sharp Park neighborhood, which includes uses of low, medium, and high-density residential, as well as commercial uses. The general plan, land use designation for the project site is commercial, and the site is also located within the C1 neighborhood commercial zoning district. In order to be approved, the proposed project would require Planning Commission approval of two entitlements prior to the issuance of a building permit. The first is a use permit pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code, Section 9-4.1001B6, which identifies a veterinary hospital or clinic as a conditional use in the C1 zoning district, and pursuant to the Pacifica Municipal Code, Section 9-4.2307, which requires animal hospitals and clinics to obtain a use permit and meet additional specific requirements. The second entitlement is for a request for a parking exception. The project property would not provide the required 16 parking spaces for the proposed 3,170 square-foot veterinary clinic in accordance with the Municipal Code, Section 9-4.2818C1, which requires one parking space per 200 square feet of gross floor area for veterinary offices and clinics. Starting first with the use permit, the applicant proposes a feline-only veterinary clinic managed by NVA Pacifica Veterinary Management Incorporated within an existing tenant space at Eureka Square Shopping Center. It would be located at the ground level between Plato's Closet Apparel and Bay Area Finest Martial Arts. This space was previously leased as a jewelry store. No exterior renovations are being proposed with this project. However, the applicant is proposing interior tenant improvements to the 3,170 square-foot space. The renovated space would contain a reception area, offices, exam rooms, various medical and surgical rooms, staff areas, and restrooms. Any new signage would be subject to a ministerial review by staff during the building permit review process, and would be consistent with the Eureka Square Shopping Center Master Sign Program. The proposed facility would provide feline-only veterinary services. There would be no animal boarding proposed for this facility. Animal enclosures would be designated for the treatment of patients and would only be used for short. Animal enclosures would be designated for the treatment of patients and would only be used for short-term use. The facility's proposed hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The cat, our cat food is delivered every Tuesday morning around 7:45 AM. And hospital supplies are delivered via UPS or FedEx either Wednesday or Thursday afternoon. The facility would have 12 employees when fully operational. The project seeks a parking exception at the Eureka, at the Eureka Share Shopping Square Shopping Center and has 269 off-street parking spaces. This number is below the minimum of off-street parking spaces required for the uses located within the shopping center pursuant, pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code. And the proposed veterinary clinic would require six additional off-street parking spaces compared to the prior retail use located in the same lease space. Because of the existing built condition of the shopping center and the relatively small size of the proposed veterinary clinic compared to the overall shopping center, the applicant is unable to create additional off-street parking facilities to meet the uses minimum off-street parking requirement. In support of the request for a parking exception, the applicant provided a parking analysis, which is located on page 62 of the planning commission packet. The analysis indicates the peak demand of the existing parking facilities based on actual parking demand from the existing commercial uses on the site, plus the reserved spaces for the vacant tenant spaces and the proposed veterinary use as prescribed by the Pacifica Municipal Code. This results in 81 available parking spaces and the expected increase in parking for the proposed veterinary use would not be significant. It would not change the vehicular circulation pattern in those shopping center and surrounding streets. Staff recommends approval of the proposed use permit and parking exception. The low-intensity feline-only veterinary clinic would be complementary use to the surrounding uses without harm or detriment to those surrounding uses and would fill a vacancy of an existing shopping center tenant space. While the existing uses of the shopping center plus those in reserve for vacant lease spaces and the proposed use have an off-street parking requirement that exceeds the provided spaces based on the standards in the municipal code, the actual utilization of parking facilities do provide the available spaces sufficient to accommodate the parking for the veterinary clinic use. Therefore, the proposed project is not anticipated to have detrimental effect on the shopping center and surrounding neighborhood. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the project as conditioned. And both city staff and the applicant team for the project are available for any questions that the planning commission may have. This ends my presentation and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, for that concise, comprehensive report. Any questions, comments, clarifications from Mr. Garcia or the commissioners may have from Mr. Garcia at this point? Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you. Just a comment, well, a comment and a question. The comment is that I know that a lot of this imagery is available in the packet, but I think it would be really helpful when you're talking through the presentation to see a graphic that kind of gives the public, especially who's watching, like a sense of where we're talking about. And then the question I had is, how, and maybe the, the anchor tenant hasn't commented or anything like that, but it's really close to the grocery store. And I just wanted to understand if those two uses, like a veterinary use and a food use in such proximity were, you know, sanitary or acceptable. I know, like, if you look at Banfield Hospital and Sprouts, those are in the same retail center, but they're on opposite sides of the center. So I just wanted to know if any thought had been given into kind of the sanitary component of it.
So there are, and perhaps the applicant can provide a more concise detail of how they deal with their dispose biohazardous materials. But there is a condition within the, the condition of approval, which that does require that is safely removed from sight. I don't think that the conversation has been had related to the grocery store and the proposed use being in the same block or I guess along the same sidewalk.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Any other questions? I guess maybe dovetailing on that. I, I don't know if that's something environmental health would ordinarily kind of weigh in on. I don't know if Ms. Sharma or Mr. Murdock have any thoughts on whether or not that's an environmental health issue or, or any other, any other reflections on.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm not aware of any applicable standard in that regard to separate disuse from other potentially sensitive uses. I'm not aware of any additional licensing from the county for veterinary clinic. Perhaps the applicants can clarify about that. I think to whatever extent there might be a concern, it would come through the environmental health permitting for the grocery store and any additional measures they may need to implement to keep their food supply safe. But again, while they're relatively close, they're not next to one another. And I'm not, I haven't identified anyways any potential conflicts between the two uses.
I would just add that I'm not aware of any requirement for animal businesses having to be a certain distance from food or such establishments like restaurants or grocery stores.
Thank you, Ms. Sharma. Commissioner Gomorrah.
A little follow-up. Would the removal of waste and loading and unloading of goods, would that occur in the rear of the property versus the front of the property?
I know that the trash is removed at the rear of the property or the rear of the building. But as far as the biohazardous materials, I would have to ask the applicant what their common procedures would be for.
That may, that may give some more additional offset to loading and unloading of food at the market. And there's like a 90-degree bend in the market. So, you know, I shop there and I'm there all the time. So I kind of know the way visually it looks like. So that, that will help a little bit if there's a concern there. I'd like to get back a little bit into the parking issue. Did the parking study indicate kind of at worst case condition, what the total number of parking spots would be used? Not what's required or what's needed, but how many would actually be used?
So Commissioner Gomorrah, it analyzed actual observed usage on a number of different days and times of day. I'm not sure that they sought to identify what the maximum utilization would be at any point in the year. You know, the typical example is the Christmas Eve at the shopping mall type of utilization, which isn't characteristic of year-round utilization. I would say that the parking analysis that was performed used acceptable methods that are applied to these types of studies and determined what a typical level of usage would be. I'm not aware of what the maximum day of utilization would be, and it may not be Christmas Eve, for example, given the mix of uses that are in that shopping center.
It used to be fog fast. That place would be always parked out, but that's. No, I'm just saying, knowing that area a little bit, the, the parking lot always tends to be barely in worse conditions unless there's something going on at the local restaurant and bar and music venue there. Very less than half of the parking lot is ever really used. So, I, you know. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gomorrah. I guess then what we'll do, seeing no further hands at this time, is go ahead and hear from the applicants, if the applicant cares to address the planning commission. I think our ordinary practice is to afford up to 10 minutes. Certain requirement to use all 10 minutes and the applicant is also pursuant to our practice authorized to put some time aside to respond to any comments from the public that we may receive as well. So at this point, Mr. Murdock is the, is the applicant with us?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Beth Fraser is identified as one of the representatives. There was an additional individual, Dave Gasser. I'm not sure if he's on the call, Beth. I don't see a full, full name of that sort on the list of attendees right now.
Well, why don't we go ahead then and hear from this.
As I say.
We'll go from there.
All right. Well, I'm just promoting another individual who raised his hand as I was speaking and talking about the unnamed Dave. So let's hope that that's Dave, Dave Gasser.
Fantastic. Well, Ms. Fraser and Mr. Gasser, between the two of you, I'll let you sort of figure out who's, who's going to address us and on what subject.
And I will track your 10 minutes in the background. I will give you a one-minute warning if you get to the nine-minute mark.
So I can start if you like, Beth. So basically, I just wanted to bring up the fact, yes, the plane is for always to be removed through the back of the building, the rear entrance. So I know that came up as a commoner question. Again, as far as issues of it being close to a grocery store, being with a firm that we've done close to 1,000 veterinary clinics over the last 20 years here. As there's typically no issues as far as where's located with the smells and odors, the way that we've designed the clinic with having UV filtration and, you know, fresh air intakes and returns going through those UV filters. I don't see it as being an issue with that proximity. And I know there's a lot of veterinary clinics that are fairly close to be at restaurants or grocery stores that we've dealt with directly with no, you know, that coming up as an issue down the road. I've never heard of that being a problem. And then you were talking about the parking and what they typically said in this report when they did the parking analysis is that there appeared to be about 86 additional spots at any given time within the facility. I mean, within the parking area. So it did seem like there was an abundance of parking available with all uses throughout their measuring of dip times of the day.
Ms. Fraser, we're having trouble hearing you. I, I don't know if we've got a, at least I am. Hmm. Still not hearing.
Ms. Fraser, are you also dialed in with a 562 area code number? Okay, allow me to promote that and see if you're able to speak then.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Looks like you've been promoted. Why don't you go ahead and unmute yourself on your phone and give that a shot?
All right. Excellent. Thank you for that. Sorry for the technical difficulties. I just wanted to add because we're a feline-only practice. The majority of our patients will be coming in carriers. So unlike a canine and feline clinic, you're not going to run the risk of dogs urinating outside or in vicinity since we're only felines and they're mostly exclusively coming carriers. So there should be a little risk of anything outside of our tenant space occurring.
Thank you, Ms. Fraser. Is that it for, for, for the two of you at this time? Okay, well, you certainly have got a little time left, so if there's a need for it, we'll afford it to you after we've heard from the, after we've heard from members of the public. And Mr. Murdock will ask if there are any members of the public who express desire to speak on this matter.
There are no hands raised by members of the public wishing to speak, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. So I guess I'll confirm then that there's nothing else from the applicants. And if that's the case, we'll go ahead and bring the matter back to the, to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. So I guess that will result in us bringing this matter back to the commission for deliberation. Commissioner Leo.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions and these may be for, both for the applicant, one maybe for staff. But they're around conditions of approval number two. The first one is 2A where it says there shall only accept small feline animals. Is small feline, is that a industry standard and known kind of what that describes? Or is there a certain weight associated with that? I guess small is relative. Mountain lion is smaller than a lion. So like, I guess, to use that extreme example, but is there some industry, veterinary industry standard that aligns with smaller? Can it be better defined? I guess that's kind of my first question.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. I'll maybe kick that over to Ms. Fraser. It looks like she may have something to say about.
Small would really refer to domesticated. So we, we will just see domesticated felines at the practice. So there isn't necessarily a weight limit per se, but just small domesticated feline only.
Thank you. And then the second question was actually to see again, under two again, but see where. I just was curious. It says that patients will be accepted and discharged same day. I do know only pets and myself, sometimes pets are held for overnight for observation. So I was just curious as to what would the protocol be for your establishment where a pet may need to be observed overnight? What would, what would happen for that? For that pet?
Sure. It would be at the, the recommendation of the doctor onsite if a feline needed to stay overnight. Oftentimes it's known for things like IV fluids and generally there's staff that would check in regularly, both after closing and typically before open hours to observe the feline. So on occasion, they will need to be hospitalized overnight, but generally speaking, most felines go home same day.
So in that scenario, just follow-up question, given that no boarding is allowed onsite, that patient would be transferred to a round-the-clock hospital in this situation?
Dave, actually, I'll let you take that.
Yeah, so that, that did bring up a question when we were reading the, this report. Because when we actually read the comment as far as or how it's been listed and entered the municipal code, it said for short term. But there wasn't anything that really said what does short term mean? There's no boarding and we definitely understand it's just not a boarding facility by any means. There's no boarding. There's no, that you can just bring your cat there for, you're going to leave for the holiday type of thing. But it is a veterinary clinic. And like you said, if there was a time when that animal would need to spend, stay the night for its own safety and health, is a life, you know, life safety of these for the pet. Or the question we wanted to clarify, because I know someone wrote in there about releasing it in the same day, but that's not really the language that was in the municipal code. It just said short term, which could be overnight. You know, again, short term is, is it within a 24-hour period, 48-hour period? That wasn't very, that wasn't very clear. So we would like, actually, you're helping determine that as well. Just knowing again that this is a veterinary clinic and in a veterinary clinic, there is times when an animal may have to stay overnight for observation or be on fluids, some of them that sort.
Okay. Yeah. And that's where I was kind of going with that. I, I wanted to understand the intent of the clinic and how this condition of approval kind of matched that intent. I assumed like if patients are all going to be transferred, that's fine, but it sounds like, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the intent is that when needed, patients will be kept under observation overnight at this location when medical needs are determined by the physician on staff or veteranarian on staff.
That, that is the desired interpretation of short term. Is that, again, we wouldn't want to jeopardize the health of, of a, of a patient to get it off, you know, off-site at 4:00 PM when the place closes. So again, we again thinking for most optimal for the community and servicing the community with that if, if required, they would be kept overnight.
Okay. So I think in order to match that intention and, and I think kind of still include something along with learned lines of short term in the conditions of approval. We should probably do clarify the, the language and definition of short term to perhaps one night overstay. And then I think on the first item, I would, and I like staff's feedback on this, but on 2A condition approval, clarifying they'll accept a domesticated feline. So basically, replace the word small with domesticated feline animals would be my, my two comments on, on this condition of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. So I was tracking then a revision or a clarification on 2A. And then 2C, I mean, there's some specific text that as you note, that requires that animals be discharged to the same business. And there'd be no holding, which I think is again the point, but it's a little unclear what that, what that means. It sounds like there's actually contemplation that you may end up with animals held overnight when medically.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. No, but I would just ask. Thank you. No, but I would just ask if the commission proceeds in that manner that we hear more from the applicant about the manner of operation. We have stated hours of operation that do not indicate 24/7 staffing in operation to monitor or observe patients. And so we would need to understand that more. There is a municipal code provision about hours of operations for commercial locations that abut residential districts. And so I think it could be made that it would not be disruptive or otherwise adversely impact the residential area. There are apartments located immediately abutting this property.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. We'll, we'll definitely circle back with, maybe this is a good time as any, since we're on the subject to maybe hear from the applicant with respect to, again, sort of the, what the operational plan would be if in fact we ended up with feline animals that are held overnight.
Typically, if an animal does need observation, there's not necessarily somebody there 24 hours. If the cat needed 24 hour care, we would definitely refer them to an emergency center. So typically staff, after we close hours of operations, there are oftentimes doctors and technicians finishing records. And typically someone will come in within, you know, 30 minutes to an hour prior to the start of the day. So if it's medically safe for an animal to stay overnight without care onsite, the doctors will occasionally hold an animal overnight. Otherwise, we will always refer out to an emergency clinic if it's in the best interest of the animal.
To clarify then, it sounds like what you're saying is that there might be again, some staff onsite for some period of time after patient hours, so to speak, and maybe some time prior to. But there wouldn't be an, you know, sort of an intention to have staff onsite. You know, off business hours, significantly off the business hour. Commissioner Hauser, I see your hands up.
Um, thank you. Um, I had several questions for the applicant. So the first one was, I just wanted to understand if, what the, so I didn't see mechanical plans. I wanted to understand what the thoughts were for each VAC and exhausting and what kind of improvements you were contemplating.
Yeah.
Dave, I'll let you.
Yeah, that's great. I'm sorry. Yeah, it doesn't look like that. I'm just looking on what the package included in this pamphlet. They didn't have the mechanical shown, but we are going by with the current ASHRAE standards, California Mechanical Code, which does require for any animal hospital, be it feline only or with canine, is high air change rates for odor control. And then, like I said, what we've done is gone above and beyond in this design to add UV filtration so that additional pathogens are killed through that UV light. And also odor is another side effect of that can be eliminated with these UV light added into the, the ducting before it goes back through the indoor units.
Got it. Okay.
And coil units.
Okay. And then my, my next question was about the, just not the amount of parking, but kind of designation of parking. Were you working with the, the commercial operator, the owner of Eureka Square to kind of designate parking spots that would be for you? And to give you a little more background on the kind of motivator of my question, both of the veterinary clinics that my pet attends right now with COVID don't allow humans to come into the facility. So you have to park and there's like a designated parking space. And then the, the clinician comes to you, takes your pet and then returns the pet after the, the work is done. So I don't know if there's like a COVID plan or if, I just like to kind of understand your thoughts on parking.
Our goal is that by the time we relocate to this space, part of the reason we're not letting clients in right now is just because our front space is so small. And that our goal is when we relocate, we're going to actually open back up to clients where they'll be able to come into the building.
So you, you don't need, so you don't need like signed, signed parking that is just for the feline. Okay. And okay, okay. And then my, my last question was kind of triggered by Commissioner Leo's question. So I just wanted to understand if there was a 24 hour circumstance where a pet was on site. I just want to make sure that we don't have like a life safety issue where if there was like a a fire at the shop, et cetera, or something terrible, that somehow the pet would be looked after. I don't know. I'm sure that there's some sort of licensing requirement for that, but I just I have, I'm a mother of two young kids. My mind goes to like the worst case scenario.
Dave, any comments on the licensing aspect of it?
Yeah, I mean, not that I know of that there is something that would prohibit and over, I mean, we're not talking any by any means doing this as an emergency clinic that's open to public by, you know, 24 hours or any of that kind of completely different type of facility. So again, we're saying that if, if that animal had have been kept overnight, it would only be if that animal is stable enough to be without having direct supervision. Beyond that, it would be fire alarm systems. And you know, if something goes off, that there's going to be a fire department called to the scene type of thing. So it's, I, I don't know of another way to, to safeguard the fact that if an animal was there overnight, would it be any more issue than another facility that didn't, you know, a standalone facility somewhere else in the district?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Damaro.
Okay, so I'm assuming that if there is an emergency condition where a pet does have to stay overnight, the pet is not there by itself overnight, that there's a staff member that would be there. Is that correct?
No, typically if, if a pet is, is stable enough to be left overnight, but not stable enough to go home, typically they are there overnight by themselves. If they do need critical care or, or 24 hour observation, we would refer to an emergency clinic that had 24 hour staffing.
Thank you, Mr. Damaro. Don't see any, I'm sorry, Commissioner Burn.
Just one more question on that. And I'm not a cat owner, so I'm not super familiar. Is that typical? For, I mean, if a feline just needs an IV or something and they need to stay overnight, is it typical that they're, they're in the facility by themselves? I have a dog and I wouldn't, I probably wouldn't agree to that for my dog.
Of course, we would, we always disclose to, to clients that their animal, the client always has a choice to take their animal home or to go to an emergency. So we would always inform them that their animal would be overnight, but they are safe in, in enclosures that are made specifically designed to enclose animals overnight. It's not like they're roaming free and around the hospital. But again, it's at the discretion of the, the doctor's recommendation. If the animal's in a safe enough position to stay by themselves, otherwise we would always refer to a 24 hour clinic. And we would always disclose to the client that their animal would be overnight by themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, owners always have a choice to stay now.
Thank you, Commissioner Burn. Mr. Murdock, I wanted to circle back to you. I know we've had some conversation now around subjective kind of about animals onsite overnight. And I'm curious about whether or not you feel as though you've got from a staff perspective, enough of a feel for kind of what's proposed to sort of track this as we're thinking about these, these sort of tweaks, the conditions of approval that Commissioner Leo noted earlier.
I do, Chair. Thank you. For starters, I think the adjustment, if the commission wants to do so, to clarify domesticated feline animals only is a simple and clear clarification. Regarding the hours of operation, I was referring to Pacifica Municipal Code Section 9-4.1002I, which notes that a use permit is required for changes of use abutting a residential district when those hours are outside of 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. A different process can apply if the hours are limited to 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And so I'm, by and large, I'm not hearing any active operational component for this, this use that would occur outside of those hours. There may be some limited, you know, early morning startup before 8:00 AM and some paperwork that might trail after the closing time. But with the clarification that there would not be active staffing 24 hours a day, I think I've heard what I need to with respect to that particular issue. But one other element that did come up in response to Commissioner Hauser's comments is related to the HVAC equipment. Presumably that would be installed on the roof. And so the commission might want to consider an additional condition about screening and or acoustic mitigation to ensure that those sounds don't adversely impact the surrounding area.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock, for that. Right, well, at this juncture, I mean, obviously we entertain any additional comments or deliberations or if somebody is inclined to make a motion, that would be appropriate at this time as well. Commissioner Hauser.
Yeah, that's more of a point of discussion. So I'm, I'm not concerned about the parking and I definitely think we need more veterinary care. I, the last time I called my vet, it was three months to get an appointment. So I appreciate, I appreciate that we have a need and I think that this is a, you know, it's great that we have commercial businesses coming to Eureka Square. I think the two things I'm, I'm not sure I totally understand is there are like four or five food uses. I think the sanitary component is taken care of by licensing. I just want to reiterate that the businesses, the food businesses that are already there, don't need to do additional work with this use coming in. And if, and if they don't, then I don't think it's a problem. And it sounds like they don't, but I just, I'd love to clarify that one more time. And then the only other thing is I'm really having a hard time wrapping my head around like if there's an earthquake or like, I, I'm not worried about like whether the animal is in stable condition because I think that there's like professional services and like really, like clearly there's a high level of care towards that. I'm more concerned like if there's a fire at Eureka Square or there's like an earthquake and no one is there to take care of the animals and they're stuck in a cage. I just, I just don't know how to, I'm not sure what the, I don't know. I'd love to hear someone else's opinion on that.
Commissioner Leo.
Along those lines, I did have, I did have kind of a question or thought around patients spending the night and any sort of remote monitoring of the patients while they're there that may potentially address also Commissioner Harris's question. And then another thought around nuisance potentially, if, if the patient is there overnight and, and I know that there was a sound study done and there, there shouldn't be any sort of issues there. But if, if there was an issue and someone wanted to, to call the proprietor to, to complain about a nuisance, for example, that was at 2:00 AM, a cat making noises. What, would there be like a phone number listed or kind of what, what's kind of the operation there? So I guess two questions. One is remote monitoring, is there any sort of remote monitoring for patients overnight? And then the second is, is if something does happen, is there like a call to the proprietor? Or a phone number, I mean, that someone could call.
Commissioner Damaro, is your comment along the same lines before I ask the applicant?
Yes, it is. And I guess the, 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 the goal here is what is the process that needs to be in place that if for some reason there is an overnight patient and something happens that the proprietor is notified, the doctor certainly knows that there's an animal there. The proprietor needs to be notified of any kind of emergency situation that they are then called and make sure that they're there for that pet. So I, I guess there needs to be some kind of process that, you know, the, a calling tree or whatever, whatever would happen to, to let the proprietor know there's a fire here. Your animals need to be, be safe. So, you know, I guess that's what we're looking for, some kind of process that you guys put in play.
Maybe that's the applicant to speak to that.
Sure. And, and definitely appreciate the concern from everyone and your questions. Our site, we anticipate installing a security system that would also have fire alarm and that would then call directly to typically both our managing veterinarian and our hospital manager. Our, our hospital manager actually lives in Pacifica, are managing that lives in Happen Bay, so they're not terribly far from the practice and would be able to, you know, get to the practice rather quickly in the event of an emergency. We don't typically have external monitoring, again, because if, if, if there was any concern about the safety of the animal's health, we would so there isn't typically an external monitoring, although we do oftentimes have security cameras. It would be definitely for putting a security camera in the, the area where we would house or hospitalize the animal if we needed to. Does that answer all your questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I, I guess my, my own concerns are somewhat limited, at least around sort of potential. It sounds like, again, concerns around impacts to other businesses, I think are relatively minor. Just given configurations that have been discussed, et cetera. You know, my understanding of the kind of the acoustic arrangements are going to be made are, you know, I just, it doesn't sound like it's likely, but you know, cats, as loud as they can be, are likely to be heard in residential areas adjacent. It just doesn't strike me as especially likely. Although I guess it's good that we're noting it. I was concerned about what Mr. Murdock had to say about sort of the HVAC equipment and sort of, I want to confirm that be some intention to ensure that that HVAC equipment, whatever's installed on the roof, it's is properly buffered or, or, or something is done to mitigate the noise so that it's not, doesn't create itself a disruption for the community. I consider that not the initial. I guess that's the extent of what I'd say. Commissioner Damaro.
A little follow up going the other way. So I used to attend karate class in that building and actually there still is a karate center that will be right next to the veterinary clinic. What about noises coming from other places affecting the cats? Will there be? And I didn't look at the, the structural plans. Will there be soundproofing between businesses? So that it's not the cat sounds coming out, it's more of other noises coming in, you know, scaring the animals or anything else. Because our classes were not quiet by any means. I don't know if the classes that they're, that are there now are as large as they used to be. I don't think they are. But I don't know, maybe that's a consideration, maybe not.
Thank you, Commissioner Damaro. Well, again, pending any additional comment, certainly certainly would be appropriate to entertain a motion or again, any additional comments or discussion the commissioners may have on the matter. Commissioner Burn.
To help maybe near a conclusion with our deliberation. When I reviewed the staff report this weekend, I, I didn't see any red flags personally. I think the staff report touched on a lot of the key items that we typically kind of review as a commission and, and the community often has concerns about like parking noise. But I, my internal struggle is I, I'm a little worried about just the patients staying overnight by themselves, similar to Commissioner Hauser's concerns. And I'm, I'm guessing it's just my lack of knowledge and experience with, with felines. So I, I don't want that concern to prevent a veterinary clinic that I'm sure we need to going in. When I read the staff report, I took it as no felines would be left overnight. I didn't do as much due diligence as Commissioner Leo in thinking like, well, what if a cat did need some 24 hour care or couldn't go home? So that's kind of my personal predicament and, and health and safety for the community. I mean, I consider that to include our I mean, I consider that to include our our pets as well. I don't know if that helps facilitate anyone else's thoughts on coming to a conclusion.
Commissioner Leo.
I was gonna ask for if we potentially have existing data. My understanding and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is an existing business in Pacifica Coastal Cat Clinic. That's moving from Pedro Point to Eureka Shopping Center. And given the current operations, our cats. Are patients held overnight and. I guess two questions is one, how how often does that typically happen, maybe on a week basis or on a month basis? So that we kind of know how often it happens. And then the other one is. Has there been anything to, has there been anything that's happened to a patient overnight that? May influence additional conditions of approval here.
Did you have a question, Commissioner Hauser? I see your hands raised.
No, Commissioner Hauser, do you want to go ahead and?
Um, I I did have something to say, but I I. I think Commissioner Leo's, I mean, I would defer to you for Commissioner Leo's question.
Why don't we go ahead and perhaps you've got anything to say to Commissioner. I'm sorry, Ms. Fraser, if you have anything to say in response to Commissioner Leo's comments, questions, that would be, that would be great.
Sure, um, you're correct, we are relocating within Pacifica and we do on occasion house animals overnight. I I don't work at the site level operations, so I would have to get back to you on the specifics of how frequently that occurs. But what I can tell you is that this is an entire team who's dedicated their entire lives to caring for the well being of cats. It's fairly rare to find doctors and technicians who will have a desire to only work with felines. So they would never do anything to to put the lives of these cats at any undue risk or harm. They care more about cats than anybody I've ever met. And so the likelihood that they would do anything that is is of risk and and of course. A a fire is an unknown risk to us in in that building, but it is fairly common, both in the. Veterinary industry to house animals overnight on occasion unsupervised if they're healthy enough for that. That's pretty common, happens almost every hospital that we support, if the if the doctor team is comfortable with it. And that also happens to often boarding facilities don't necessarily have overnight twenty four hour care as well. So it's pretty common in the industry as a whole.
Commissioner Hauser.
Um, I, yeah, then I I really appreciate the the fact that you've taken the time to like put the plans together and they were really good plans. Like you you clearly like took time to put a lot of thought into kind of how things were done. I think this is a really wonderful use, as I said before, I think we need more veterinary care. I'd like to see this item tonight be successful. You know, it sounds if this if it really is like an industry standard. And I'm I'm assuming also that licensing for veterinary clinic would have more of a. Understanding of this, then I mean, maybe this is just not really our purview and it's more of the licensing purview. So. I don't know, I'm like, again, I go my mind goes to the worst case place, but I think on the whole, I would be comfortable moving this forward personally. Thank you.
Chair Nebelen, if I could just add a bit of information for the commission and perhaps Mr. Gasser can expand upon it. But the the plans submitted also indicate that this space is sprinkled with fire sprinklers. And so I think that would contribute to the ability to. Suppress a fire long enough for first responders to make it to the facility and give the best chance of putting out any fire that might occur. So hopefully, that's that's relevant information for those commissioners that were concerned about the safety of the animals in the event of a fire.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock for that information. Mr. Gasser, anything to add?
Yeah, I think with, you know, including that and the fact that they're having monitored. A security and fire system that's going to be calling the both the hospital manager and the attending doctor. Is it shows that goes above and beyond if anything were to occur. Something would be triggered and a staff member could be there in a very short amount of time to deal with. Like, like we said, in a very slim chance that their animal is overnight, they can be there to to deal with that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gasser. You know, I I guess I would be along the same lines as if it was Commissioner Hauser who was indicating that. You know, my sense is that this is a kind of a well thought out, well conceived. Project, I think we found a couple of ways that we could find to conditions of approval, you know, a couple of them. Some, I think important clarifying. Notions that we've that we've shared, but I would be comfortable moving this moving this matter forward. So to the troops that we talked about, the conditions of approval. Commissioner Leo.
I'm happy to make a motion prior to doing so, though, I may want staff assistance on the modifications to. Condition of approval to C to clarify that. Overnight care would be acceptable at this location. My initial pass is just lopping off the last two sentences. Where animal closures are designated for treatment of patients that will be used short term. I don't know if further clarification is needed there. Any guidance by staff would be appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo, if you'll just allow me a moment, I'll. Read a suggest suggested revised version of the commission. So Commissioner Leo, I would suggest consideration revising to C to read as follows. The veterinary clinic shall operate as a veterinary clinic only. Animal enclosures are designated for the treatment of patients and will be used short term. Animals may be accepted. I apologize. Let me start over, please. The veterinary clinic shall operate as a veterinary clinic only. Animal enclosures shall be designated for the treatment of patients. And will be used short term. Upon the recommendation of the treating veterinarian, animals may be held overnight for observation. For not more than one night. Boarding shall not occur at the clinic.
That sounds good, so I'll go ahead and make the motion. Planning Commission of City Pacifica does hereby approve use permit UP dash one two eight dash two one and parking exception PE dash one nine one dash two one. To establish a feline only vet clinic in an existing commercial space at one fifty Eureka Square. APN zero one six dash two two zero dash one four zero, subject to the conditions of approval as amended. Including amendments to condition two A to replace the word small with domestic. And to C as revised by Deputy Planning Director Murdock. Included in Exhibit A to this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo, you have your your motion, is there a second to Commissioner Leo's motion? I will second the motion. But Commissioner Ferguson, did you want to, did you want to second the motion?
Sure.
Wait, okay, well, seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Do we get a roll call vote please on the motion in a second?
Yes, Chair, Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domra.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Leo.
Yes.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Fraser and Mr. Gasser.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight.
So we'll move then to the next item on our agenda, and that is file number twenty twenty one zero one two subdivision SUV two fifty dash twenty one. Felt by Mark Hee. Heavy of vertical ventures that will see to authorize condominium in subdivision of existing business park for purposes of sale of twenty five. Individual commercial units of five eighty Cresby Drive, but it's APN zero two two one six two three nine zero. Which is also known as the Cresby Business Center. The recommended sequel action for this item is a class one categorical exemption and pursuant to section two two zero one of the sequel guidelines. And the recommended action is to approve this matter as conditioned, I'll ask for a staff report first.
Thank you, Chair, good evening again, Honorable Commissioners, and Deputy Planning Director Christian Murdock. Propose subdivision before you for consideration this evening would subdivide the airspace above the property at five eighty Cresby Drive. Into twenty five commercial condominium units within the existing buildings of the site. The Pacifica Municipal Code defines condominium as an estate in real property consisting of an undivided interest in common. In a portion of a parcel of real property. Together with a separate interest in space in a residential, industrial or commercial building on such real property. Such as an apartment, house, office or store. Condominium may also include in addition a separate interest in any other portion of such real property. The site, which is known as the Cresby Business Center, was approved by the City of Pacifica for development in nineteen seventy nine. And has operated as a business park for several decades. In twenty twenty, the new owner purchased the property and shortly thereafter filed the subdivision application. Subdivision would not include any new development at the site. It would also not change the use of the site, which would continue to be governed by the city's general plan and zoning regulations. Staff has evaluated the proposed subdivision and believes there is sufficient evidence to make the finding for approval. Specifically, the proposed subdivision would be consistent with the various policies in the general plan. And with the provisions of Pacifica Municipal Code Titles nine and ten, which contain zoning and subdivision standards as further detailed in the staff report. The subdivision would qualify for a class one categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act or CECL. Which applies to existing facilities. Subdivision K of Section fifteen three oh one of the CECL guidelines includes a specific exemption for the subdivision of existing commercial buildings. Where no physical changes would occur, which are not otherwise exempt. As noted in the staff report, the only physical changes at the site have occurred separately from the subdivision and consisted of minor facade improvements. These facade improvements were approved with a building permit and were considered a ministerial project under CECL. Additionally, none of the exceptions to the application of the categorical exemption would apply. Staff received several written public comments after publication of the agenda packet for this item. In addition to the written public comment included as an attachment to the staff report. The comments are posted on the planning commission page of the city's website, and I've also provided the comments to all the commissioners in advance of tonight's meeting. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a attached resolution to approve the proposed subdivision and find the project exempt from CECL. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Are there any questions or points of clarification that commissioners want to raise with Mr. Murdock? Commissioner Ferguson.
Yeah, I was looking through and it seemed to me fairly clear that it was just airspace being subdivided and that. Any sort of modifications with the new ownership would be sort of like a tenant improvement. Modification, but is there any provision for new airspace condominium owners to make exterior modifications to the building itself? Or modifications that would would affect the exterior of the building?
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson, Ferguson, so those types of alterations that would occur if this subdivision is approved and implemented. Would be governed by the covenants, conditions and restrictions or the CCNRs that would be put into place to manage the facility. And so those are not subject to review at this point in time, there is a condition of approval. To make those subject to city review if the subdivision is improved. And perhaps the applicant can also explain in his experience what what provisions are in place to coordinate, if that's the concern. Those types of alterations to the exterior of buildings such as this.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson and Mr. Murdock, any other questions or points of clarification at this time? Okay, we'll sing, we'll we'll go ahead then and as we as we always do, hear from the applicants. And again, the applicant will have up to ten minutes to present the applicant's matter and. Looks like Mr. Heavie's been promoted this time and. Go ahead then and hear from you from you, Mr. Heavie.
Good evening, my name is Mark Hee, with Vertical Ventures.
My apologies.
No, no worries, it's happened before. So first of all, I'd like to thank the planning commission and your for your time tonight and staff for all the work they've done getting us here. We're real excited about the project. I built my first commercial condominium in two thousand and two. And over the sale of over a thousand units have learned that. Small businesses like to own their property when they have the option, they they they'd like to control their their property. And have those benefits of ownership, being able to customize their space, being able to control the improvements to the exterior of their space. Touch on that a little bit later, but again, all we're trying to do is take the benefits of ownership the landlord typically does. And give the tenants the opportunity to do that. Because bottom line, you know, this is the home for their business, which is most of these people's daily livelihood. So it's very important to them to know that now they have control of this when they buy it for long term and not just for two or three years. It's remaining on their leases. And as an owner, they get all the benefits of ownership that typically accrue to a landlord. You know, they're building equity, they have appreciation, they have tax benefits, they pay down their mortgage, all the things people want to do when they own real estate. They also have the advantage for business owners to sell the business and keep the property and rent it as a part of their financial plan. Or one of our tenants is going to buy and plans on passing the business and the real estate on to their family to continue it. A number of those businesses that been there for decades and decades, a couple have been there since the project was built in nineteen eighty. So all that time, they've paid rent to somebody else and have nothing to show for it at this point. But we're going to change all of that. The to to address the concerns about the exterior and the overall running of this project. It's it's just like a residential condominium project, we've set up an association. There's a budget to run the day to day, there's also a budget in place for reserves to put away money. Long term to replace parking lot roofs and those kind of things. We've hired, we use a management company that specializes in commercial condominiums. So we're we're trying to set up the association for long term success. But then after we're done with the project, those decisions all go to the owner. So they can keep the property manager in place and pay them their fee, or they can self manage it and collect the dues and do those things. So again, what we're trying to do is is set up the infrastructure so they can control, control their real estate. Typically, we'll have a design review committee that will review as a level before it gets to the city for their review. Any changes to the exterior. Hopefully, those won't be needed in a long time, the the project was good for forty years and we've just done a fairly major facelift with new facades and all. Not quite done, there's a couple of supply chain issues that are holding us up, but if you go by, you'll see quite a change and we're submitting our. Signage for permits and we're going to upgrade the signage in the last few outstanding items, so that should be wrapped up pretty quickly here. For us, a successful project is that for every tenant that wants to buy, they can buy the unit. This this project provided a unique little opportunity for us with PCTV. In that they've been there for quite a long time, they had done a major amount of infrastructure work with their recording studios and those things. And we're in a kind of a precarious position because their lease was up in May. So the first thing we did was extend their lease for one year, no change in rent, just give them plenty of time to work through what's happening. And since then, we've had a number of meetings with the the executive director and the board to work out an arrangement with them. And and we made them an offer to buy at a substantial discount to. But the prices and give them plenty more time to work on that. So our our goal is that they're they're such a unique asset for the community and they're right there. And they've got a ton of money in this deal that we they need to stay and we want them to stay. So we're going to continue to work on that and hopefully can get that finalized. We've had very strong support from the tenants who are becoming buyers, and I think you've received a number of those letters. In support, the majority of the buyers. In support, the majority of the buyers right now are tenants and there were a couple of vacant spaces that have been acquired. In contract, obviously not acquired until we get the approval. But most of the people are local residents running local businesses. It, it's real important for us to support the businesses and the community and, and the services they give to communities, guys have all been in the area for a long time and. We want to have them, give them the opportunity to continue to provide those services, control their real estate. Move when they want to move, if they don't, they don't have to move, so. That's what we're, that's what our business is all about. So with that, I'm going to request your approval, we've, of our motion tonight, we've looked at the conditions of approval and our agreement with all of those. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Heeby. I think what we'll do now is I hear from many members of the public who want to speak to the item, I don't think Mr. Heeby's used all ten of his minutes and. So he'll sort of be able to speak if he chooses to after we've heard from members of the public who wish to address this matter. So, Mr. Murdoch, I'll ask you to help us with that.
Thank you, Chair, there are no hands raised at this time for public comment. And as I say that, one hand has gone up. Let me set the timer and then I will call the first speaker. All right, Mrs. Cresspin, please go ahead, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good evening all. I just briefly wanted to have a little bit more clarification as I. Am one of the homeowners that live behind the Crespi Center. And I know that there was some question from one of the commissioners about exterior changes. And I just wanted to see how that would look in the future for the homeowners who live directly behind this building. Will there be buildings going up, changes in exterior that will affect our backyards? Things of those sorts and what we should be looking for. I know in the packet you said there was some modifications going to be made. Exterior, do we need to be concerned about any noise levels, construction impeding onto our property lines? Things of those sorts. I think that's my main concern is mostly, not concern, just, just want to be clarified like what it would look like for the exterior for the neighbors that live behind the building.
Thank you. Mr. Murdoch, any other speaker?
No other hands are raised, Chair.
Thank you. Well, I will ask the applicants, I'm sure he has any additional comments at this point, he still has some of his ten minutes left.
Well, to answer the questions, actually, all the work we were going to do is already done, so we, you know, we're making no. Substantial changes to the building, we took off the old blue tile and put on a nice standing seam metal roof, we painted the building. Painted the parking lot lights, we added LED light fixtures, all the exterior light fixtures have been upgraded. But basically, all the construction work is done, there's a little finish left and some landscape cleanup and the monument and the signage and the monument sign, but. But other than that, there'll be no other impact on the neighbors. And as, as you know, in the planning commission, if we were going to do anything major or change the building and all that would substantially, you know, require a substantial. Process through the city, so we're, we're basically done with the work that our, our plan is to, is to really not. Significantly change the, the use or the exterior of the building because that, that just adds time and money to the project, but. These people have been in the same place for quite a while and have been happy with the facility, we wanted to update it, make it look new, but our, our work's all done. Now it's just a matter of a couple of cleanup issues and some supply chain delays and we'll, we'll be finished.
Thank you, Mr. Heeby, we'll go ahead then and bring the matter back to the, to the commission. And I'll ask my colleagues deliberately to say. Deliberation, points of discussion at this point. Commissioner Ferguson.
Yeah, I only have one question really, and that relates to, I guess protections for existing tenants. My thought is that if there are tenants now, I certainly agree that most tenants would like to own their own destiny and own their own. Unit, but if there are tenants without the means currently or future tenants. Who are, you know, renters and then the ownership changes of their unit to another person. Are there protections for them beyond just the usual tenants? Rights for these people, I mean. Is it, I don't, I'm not super familiar with commercial rules, but if ownership changes hands, is it the option of the new owner to push out a tenant? Would you like me to respond to that?
Feel free to, yes.
Yeah, we are bound by the terms of the lease, whatever lease they had with the previous landlord. So we, they, they have rights in the real estate and we, we take it subject to those rights, but after those, that lease is up, then, then we renegotiate the lease. We have that right to do that, so typically, you know, a, a normal new change in landlords, especially after a family's owned it for forty years, they come in and, and raise the rents pretty substantially. And that basically never ends, right, there, there's no other protections over the term. Each time that lease comes up, they're gonna, they're gonna see a market rent increase, what, what, again, the major, one of the main benefits of ownership, especially now with low interest rates. In SBA financing, so the Small Business Administration will finance up to ninety percent of the purchase price. At a fixed rate for twenty five years, so at that point, you're the owner and you know what your, your mortgage costs are for twenty five years. Again, what we try to do is, is work with owners if there is an issue and they want to buy. Well, we would consider carrying back part of that down payment or certain kind of things. And in extreme circumstances like PCTV, we, we, we've gone well above and beyond that and, and basically. Given them that cost, the, the building at cost because we think they're a valuable asset to the community, but, but to some degree. The tenant has the rights, whether it's condominium or rental property, they don't change.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser.
Thanks, I have one question, but I think it's for Mr. Murdoch. Um, are there other commercial condominiums in the city, I think if I'm not mistaken, Manor Shopping Center is commercial condominiums?
Not to my knowledge, Commissioner Hauser, the Manor Shopping Center is subdivided such that there are multiple parcels, to my knowledge, but I'm not aware that it has condominiums.
Lot lines, got it, okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Any other comments, questions, or for that matter, if there is a motion, that, that would be fine too, Commissioner Hauser.
Um, yeah, so I, I think it makes sense, I appreciated that there were a lot of letters of support to condominiumize. I also concur that it's really wonderful to offer business owners. The opportunity to own their space, especially people who have a lot of tenant improvements. So I would be willing to either make or support a motion. And I also appreciate that there's going to be a property owners association that's responsible for maintenance and that it. Wouldn't be a case with zero lot lines where it's subdivided, but actually a cohesive property owners association.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Hauser, I guess I would just share my. Agreement with the, with the points you raised and I would be supportive of moving forward as well with such a commercial.
Commissioner Leo. I'm happy to make a motion. I moved out the planning commission.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, move that planning commission finds. The, the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And approves tentative subdivision map SUV dash two five zero dash two one by adopting the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report. Including conditions of approval and exhibit A of the resolution and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo, Commissioner Hauser.
I'll second the motion.
Great, well, we have a motion from Commissioner Leo and a second from Commissioner Hauser, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarath.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Leo.
Yes.
Commissioner Nibblin.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Mr. Heeby, for your input this evening.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, have a good evening, before we move on to. I guess, commission communications and staff communications, I guess I should make sure that I note that. Anyone who's agreed by the action of the planning commission has ten counts of this to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions from this evening are challenged in court issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision we've had only if petition is filed with the court not later than the ninety day following the data point, which the decision is final. And judicial review environmental terminations may be set to a shorter time period for litigation, in certain cases thirty days following the data final decision. That will then take us to communications, I will start with commissions communications, are there any commission communications? Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you, Chair, um, so. I served as the liaison to city council last week for the development plan at the Fairmont Shopping Center. Um, the council voted to approve the development plan. And they upheld the condition that we had added regarding firearms. I will note that there was a little bit of confusion that was created with the Tribune article that came out that kind of incorrectly. Identified what we had said, but, um, yeah, the overall, I think it was a fairly straightforward and smooth council hearing.
And then thanks, Commissioner Hauser, for representing the, the commission at that hearing. Well, then, ask for any staff communication.
Thank you, Chair, first, I want to thank Commissioner Hauser for serving as liaison, as she mentioned, the city council introduced the ordinance on October eleventh and will vote next Monday whether to adopt the ordinance. Next, I want to announce two upcoming events that may be of interest to the commissioners or to our viewers. The first is, let's talk housing San Mateo County, it's an effort underway by the Twenty One Elements Housing Consortium and the various local jurisdictions in San Mateo County. They're holding a series of community information sessions on housing related topics. This is in parallel with the ongoing work to update the housing elements of the twenty one jurisdictions in San Mateo County. The next session is scheduled on Wednesday, October twenty seventh at six PM. In the session, we'll discuss housing and racial equity. More information for this and other upcoming events can be found at letstalkhousing.org/events. Again, letstalkhousing.org/events. And then the second event I wanted to announce is related to Sam Trans's ongoing work to update the bus routes within San Mateo County. Their effort is called Reimagine Sam Trans. They are holding an online community meeting for the coast side to go over proposed route changes on Thursday, October twenty eighth at five thirty PM. And more information about that event can be found at reimaginesamtrans.com.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch. The next item on our agenda then is adjournments, and I guess I'll ask if there is a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hauser.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, we have a motion to adjourn, is there a second? I can, Mr. Berman.
Second.
Wait, we have a motion in a second, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarath.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Leo.
Yes.
Commissioner Nibblin.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, so we're adjourned, everybody have a nice evening.
Good night.
Good night.